Hope everybody's doing well tonight. Hope everybody's enjoying the beautiful weather we had today and hopefully the rest of the week. The chair declares there is a quorum for the October 4th, 2025 Richmond County Board of Education meeting. Would you please come to order? Lead us in our moment of silence.
Would you stand, please, and join us for a moment of silence? Thank you. And now join us in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Shuler. Board members, you have minutes of our open session meetings from our previous meeting. Are there any changes that need to be those open minutes meetings? If there are none, motion by Mr. Etheridge to accept, a second by Ms. Shuler for the discussion. All in favor by saying aye. All opposed? Thank you. Dr. Farrell, are there any changes to our agenda?
No, there are none.
Under consent of the board, we will accept the agenda and move forward with our business items. And first up tonight is Ms. Karen Whitley.
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. I'm going to start our October meeting with inspiring excellence, beginning with Dr. Joy Marie in Elbury Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be here this evening with two outstanding recipients of the Inspiring Excellence Award. To begin with, I want to recognize Mr. Derek Anderson is our certified recipient of the Inspiring Excellence Award. He's a cornerstone at Elbury Middle School. Derek is a veteran math teacher whose students consistently see growth year after year. He's a master of his craft, a true professional who owns his data, studies it and makes smart instructional adjustments that move kids forward. He's known for setting high expectations both in the classroom and on the soccer field. As the girls' soccer coach, he has led his team to multiple conference championship games, showing the same drive and focus he brings to teaching. His discipline comes from a belief, a belief that his students can and will achieve great things. He's respected by his colleagues, trusted by his students, and deeply supportive of the vision we built together at Elbury Middle School. He's also a devoted husband to Roxy and a father to Lennox. The truth is Derek's impact can't be measured by data alone. It's seen in the confidence, growth, and success of every student who walks through his door. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Derek Anderson.
How long you been there now?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, correct? Speak for yourself.
One, two, three. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations Derek. Up next, we have our classified recipient. It's honored tonight to recognize someone with dedication, professionalism, and heart like Elbury Middle School, the special place that it is, Ms. Kami Holton. Since joining Richmond County Schools and becoming part of the Elbury Middle School family in July of 2023, Kami has proven herself to be an incredible asset. You were attending him with her office teammate to ensure everything in the front office runs like a well-oiled machine. No task is ever too big or too small. She handles it with precision, patience, and pride. When Anthony campus rolled out in 2024, she dove right in, mastered the system before long was called upon by other data managers when they had questions. That speaks volumes about her skill, confidence, and willingness to support others. What truly makes Kami exceptional is her understanding that schools work best when everyone pitches in. She's covered classes, helped during lunch so teachers could enjoy a duty-free break, cared for students when they were sick, and offered gentle reminders when expectations needed reinforcing, always with kindness and professionalism. Beyond her work, she is devoted wife, mother, and grandmother who manages to put her family first without ever compromising her important role in the Elbury Middle. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Kami Holton.
He's gotta come. Y'all gotta come. It's in the job description.
All right, you ready? One, two, three. She looks good. Great. And we have Ms. Karen Allen, representing Richmond High School.
Good evening. Our first recipient for the Inspiring Excellence Award is Ms. Alex Gardner for math. And Ms. Gardner exemplifies what it means to inspire excellence. She doesn't just teach Math 1, she designs learning experiences tailored to each student's needs. She analyzes students' performance data to create focused, standard-based groups, ensuring that every student receives the support they need. She modifies assignments to honor student accommodations, demonstrating that differentiation isn't just a buzzword, it's a daily practice. And when students need additional support, she pulls small groups for targeted instruction to help close the achievement gap. Ms. Gardner's impact extends far beyond her own classroom. As a leader in our professional learning communities, she has stepped forward to create common assessments for all Math 1 teachers. This work strengthens our entire department, ensuring consistency and rigor while supporting her colleagues. And if teaching and curriculum leadership weren't enough, Ms. Gardner serves as our senate advisor, a role that requires patience, creativity, and dedication. She works alongside student leaders to plan the special events that bring joy and connection to our school community. Through her guidance, our student leaders develop skills that'll carry them far beyond high school, learning what it means to serve others and lead with purpose. As this role comes with a lot of responsibility that extend beyond the regular school day, including senior sunrise, leading the bleacher creatures at home football games, monitoring the student section as they cheer on our basketball team, and planning and orchestrating homecoming, which is a job just within itself. Ms. Gardner represents the very best of what educators can be, a master teacher who uses data to drive instruction, a collaborative leader who strengthens her colleagues, and a mentor who invests in student leadership. She sees potential in every student and creates pathways for them to flourish. Without a doubt, Richmond Senior is a better place because of Ms. Gardner. Her commitment to excellence inspires us all. Ms. Gardner, thank you for everything you do. Our school is a better place because of you. Next up, we have Derek Wiley, and I want to recognize a great educator and student advocate. He is our credit recovery coordinator. If you visit the bus lot in the morning, you will encounter Mr. Wiley, starting every single day with a smile and a song. I've often wondered what he eats for breakfast that puts him in such a good mood, and whatever it is, I think we all need some. So Mr. Wiley's impact goes far beyond bringing positive energy to our campus. He is relentless in monitoring student performance and credit recovery, providing individual support and encouragement to keep our students on track toward graduation. For students who may have stumbled along the way, Mr. Wiley is often the difference between giving up and earning that diploma. He sees potential where others might see problems, and he refuses to let our kids fall for the cracks. Mr. Wiley is also one of our most reliable team members, consistently supervising students during arrival and dismissal, ensuring our campus runs smoothly and safely every day. Simply put, Mr. Wiley is a bright spot at Richmond Senior. He makes our school better, our students stronger, and our school community a better place. Mr. Wiley, thank you for everything you do. We are incredibly fortunate to have you.
All right, now we'll have some beginning teacher recognition. Ms. Tina Pearson. I gotta keep that McNeil in there because it's only I will. Tina Pearson.
That's right, that's right. And you wouldn't let me intern a fund to you that one time because I put you on special. That's coaching. I'm gonna say something about him. Well, first, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm due to this, but I'm Tina Pearson McNeil. I'm beginning teacher, director of beginning teacher support and recruitment. And I'm excited and I'm happy to be here because we couldn't do anything without our teachers. You know, at first, it's the clientele that come to the schools, you know, with the students coming, with the buses, getting our students to a school and our parents. But we cannot do anything in this district without teachers. They're in the trenches. Oh, without further ado. The basics of my job is basically being a servant leader. And one person on the school board in his absence, Darryl G. Mason, we always say the G. I don't even know what the G stands for. We always say Darryl G. Mason because he told me when he employed me, if you can't be a servant, then I don't need you. Because I kept asking him, what are the job requirements? You know, I'm at alternative schools, what do I need to do? And he said, you need to be a servant. So that's one thing I was telling these teachers, you need to be a servant. And being a servant leader means that you're going to put yourself last and put everybody else first, especially when it comes to that student. So with that being said, we're serving currently 75 teachers who are beginning teachers in their first year, second year, and third year. And that number's growing because I was given today another beginning teacher in my absence of being at USCP. But with that being said, this year with the beginning teachers of the year, the candidates, they're in their second year of teaching. That means they've completed the first year successfully. And with that success, it wasn't easy for them. We found that out during the interviews. It was not easy. It was a stretch. And one thing I was listening to earlier today was the prayer of Jabez. Some people say Jabez. But the prayer is talking about expanding your territory. And if you're going to expand your territory, you have to stretch yourself. And you have to let others stretch you in order to build capacity. So with the teacher, they're building capacity, and we're building their capacity through the HR department, the curriculum department, with our superintendent, with our school board. We're building their capacity. So our beginning teacher of the year candidates, and they're sitting here today. Some of them could not be here. The first one could not be here, Lysander Little, Lysander Little, Ashley Chapel Educational Center. He couldn't be here because he is a coach and he's out there at Richmond Senior High right now, and he has to be there in support of our athletes. So with Lysander Little, he referenced the love that he had for this county and being a part of the Raider Marching Band. When we first started it as eighth graders, being on the field for the first time, he talked about his love for sports. He also talked about the alternative setting and how that shaped him as a teacher. He talked about being a history teacher, civics and economics, and where there's a need. He said he felt like he wanted to be at another school, but when he went to Ashley Chapel, he said if he could just help one person, one student, that's all that mattered to him. And he referenced Joyce Sweeney, an academic coach. He says she always provided help with curriculum, and she always gave him a listening ear, and that's important. So I want to highlight some of these people. So that's Lysander Little. And Benny Laviner said, he's always someone that they can count on. Cordova Middle. Megan Steed-Nielsen. That's the beginning teacher for Cordova Middle. Megan Steed-Nielsen is a seventh grade LA teacher at Cordova Middle. She transitioned from Richmond Senior High She transitioned from Richmond Senior High after a semester of teaching. She says she felt a sense of belonging at Cordova Middle, and she's able to teach the students in which she lives in their neighborhood. And she said that's important to her. She mentioned Ms. Kim Walker, which is an academic coach at Cordova Middle. And she said she was instrumental in shaping her into the LA teacher that she is. And she was very appreciative to her. She also mentioned her husband and the quotes that helped shape her into the educator that she's become. She says she had to sit down with herself to figure out what she really wanted to do with her life, and she realized it was being an educator. So while she was this educator, she also met the love of her life, and now they teach together, and that's important to her. You'd be surprised at the things that people share. And she said, the joy of teaching is teaching together with you. As a matter of fact, sometime they finished their assignments together in the VT meetings. And I said, that's okay. I said, that is, is that all right? But if I would, Megan Steed, if you'd just hand it up. Scott Withrow, the principal, says she's hardworking, and she embraces suggestions from veterans and implements them to great success in her classroom. She conducts her classroom as a teacher who is far beyond her actual years of experience. Next, we have Shannon Nikki Keys, Fairview Heights Elementary School. Nikki is a pre-k teacher at Fairview Heights Elementary School, and she only has the downtime while they are sleeping. She gave acknowledgement to her previous administration, Dr. Gardner, Dylan Ha, the former BT director and academic coach, Ms. McBride, for helping and assisting her in the level of understanding and her production thus far. She says she's currently learning new administration and the coach that's there, and she's open to what they're trying to do at the school, especially if it's helping the students. Meanwhile, she says she's wanting to serve as an advocate and teach her little ones how to make sure they get what they need, and she's going to advocate for what they need. Her principal says she's an outstanding person. Next up is Hamlet Middle School, McLajia Manning. McLajia is an Army veteran who is starting her second career in what I call her first love. She always wanted to teach, but she was unsure of the area because she wanted to be in the elementary setting. She's an eighth grade teacher, LA teacher at Hamlet Middle. She was offered a position in the secondary world at Hamlet Middle School. And of course, she called me, and I told her, you should take it. She spoke about building relationships with her students and providing that safe space for them to learn. This was very dear to her because she is a product of the Hamlet community. She played basketball, and she was able to be an assistant coach for them last year and brought back a win for the district. She spoke about being an influential person and how she could actually make a difference in the lives of her students. She also spoke highly about the person that is reading. She spoke about how my life and my level of resilience was very important to her because she was a fourth grade student up under me at Marra Avenue School, and she also is my goddaughter. She took our conversations to heart, and she applied great skill with her hands and with her intelligence. Monica Robinson basically says she's the total package. But of course, I told Monica, you can't have her. She's mine, and I have to share her with her mom and now with the students of Hamlet Middle School. She is actually, she'll be on FMLA at the end of November. Marra Avenue is next, and that's Portia McDonald. Portia McDonald is a second grade teacher who started this journey as a substitute, then teacher assistant, parent of Richmond County Schools, and now a teacher. She loves reading the Bible and spending time with her family. Portia referenced one of her former teachers by the name of Mary Jane Thank as an influential person who made an impact on her when she was a child. She started that foundation of showing her how to treat children in the classroom and how to help them with their basic needs, and then you teach them. Mr. Gomez said, her calm, steady presence and natural leadership makes her a cornerstone for their school community. She leads by example, balancing compassion with discipline and inspiring everyone around her to give their very best every day. Next, we have Richmond Senior High School, Houston Chance. Houston Chance teaches in the Exceptional Children Department at Richmond Senior High School. She is with the best of the best in the downstairs deep pot area. And I had the opportunity to work with her and observe her two years ago. Chance gave recognition to all the teachers in the deep pot area for being the influential group on her behalf for becoming a teacher. If you know the teachers and teachers assistants in the deep pot area, then you know you can't name just one. They come as a pack, and they take care of Houston. They take care of their children, and all of them are seen as loving individuals downstairs. Joyce McCray said that Ms. Chance makes teaching look effortless. She knows her students' strengths and their needs, skillfully differentiates instruction in the moment and creates a nurturing classroom where every student can succeed, while constantly displaying her friendly smile to every child. Next, we have Washington Street Elementary School, Emma Parker. Emma is a second grade English teacher. Emma's last name will be changed pretty soon, and she is marrying into a family who places education at the top of the charts. Emma gave honor to her grandmother as being the most influential person in her life, and she was an educator for over four decades. She set the foundational pieces for Emma, and now she emulates that in her classroom and her philosophy of teaching. Ms. Gunnell looks at Emma as an inspirational teacher, and she looks at her as to be an elite in that second grade area. And on top of that, Emma helps out her fellow coworkers. Last but not least, we have West Rockingham Elementary, Jamaya Crump. Jamaya Crump is a third grade teacher at West Rockingham. She has the ability to look for her students this year. Jamaya mentioned her mother being the influential seed planter in her life. Her mother worked in the field of education and would take Jamaya and her little sister to school with her. And this is where the foundation began. This is where her mind started to flourish, and now she's a teacher for Richmond County Schools. Ms. Lisa Miss Crump has a positive nurturing classroom where she holds her students to high standards. She is an excellent math teacher and challenges students to collaborate and problem solve. So I am thankful that I was awarded this opportunity to not only be the director, but get a chance to be inspired by these teachers who sit behind me. We had a panel to basically ask questions to these educators who are behind me. And I asked the curriculum department, the HR department, and I also asked one of your own, Beth Schuler, to come and sit on the panel. And the reason being is because I feel like everyone needs to be represented when you're asking these people questions because you never know what you're going to get. It's always the way you ask the question, and then you'll see the response. So of course, you all know Beth Schuler. She made it easy for all of them to answer the question, and she made it harder for us to actually score. I wanted them all to win. She did, she did. But with that being said, you know, just taking a moment to breathe. I always tell my teachers, just breathe. Because if you rush yourself, you're rushing timing. And I really wanna take the time to just say, I appreciate every one of you for planting a seed. Even with Dr. Farrell being here, last on the board, he has planted a seed in my life, and he has helped me. And he's helped me grow, not tear me down. This helped my other goddaughter succeed in teaching. Scotty, I met you when I was at East Rockingham Elementary. We didn't even know we were at Mainers Tires.
That's right.
We were just talking and collaborating, and he planted a seed. And also, his wife ended up becoming an educator at East Rockingham Elementary. Bobby Sue Ornsby, she planted a seed every time you give me a hug at the Richmond Senior High game. And not only that, but your husband inspired me a long time ago, not to shut my mouth. He let me, at Elder Junior High, he let me sell pencils because he said, if you can outsell that machine, he said, you can walk around this campus, and I did. Coach Saturnfield planted a seed in me as far as being my coach. He made me sweat up my hairstyle years ago when I tried to be cute on the volleyball court. And thanks to him, he doesn't know this, but I went on to college and later played for a year. He changed my position from being a setter to a digger, and I thought, this man is crazy. But he was right, and he planted a seed, and that seed took me to college. Dr. Farrell, he actually moved me from one school to the next. And he also gave me that inspiration to stop doing a checklist and go for the things that I really wanted to do. Coach Tillman, I call him Ron Stoppable, he doesn't know that. But Ron Stoppable, he is a person that will influence you, and he will always say something to you positively. Mr. Edwards, he taught me how to type. He put a box over my hand every time I looked at the keys. And I thought he would stop when I became an educator, but he didn't. He kept going. So I appreciate that. And for that, just don't stop planting a seed. Don't stop increasing someone's territory. And I tell these teachers that too behind me. So without further ado, and I hope I didn't take up a lot of time, sorry down there.
It's the board's meeting.
So sorry. But I appreciate you, and now you know next time not to be on the agenda. But without further ado, it's about them, and it's their time. Richmond County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year is... Yes, I have jokes. Twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five or twenty-six school year. Without further ado. Waiting on the parents to call, or the families. And we also have money for Ms. McDonald from Griffin Design. They can tie you with five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Congratulations, well deserved. We try to work.
You're gonna put one more shoulders.
One, two, three. Perfect, now family.
I'm messing this up. I got it, I got it.
One, two, three. Perfect. One, two, three. Stand to her. How are you feeling? Congratulations.
You want us in the front? I'm just gonna wait until she moves us best because we're gonna get moved, watch.
There are people on the front.
Yes, fam.
One, two, three.
Give everybody a chance to get out for a second. Those new teachers, they keep on top. Okay.
Okay.
George Bell Award.
So each year, members of our Board of Education spend countless hours attending meetings, reviewing policies, completing trainings, and making decisions that shape the direction of our school district. This evening, we'd like to recognize all of that hard work. The North Carolina School Board Association has presented our Board of Education with a Gold Bell Award, which is an award for school districts where every board member completes at least 12 hours of training. So on behalf of Richmond County Schools, we just want to say thank you for all of the talent, dedication, and hard work you all put in to the Negroes. It's a new frontline this time, nobody in the back.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Be my opportunity to feel collected, boy, because I'm never those sort of likes.
Oh, that works. One, two, three.
We're getting better.
You are.
Good evening, Ms. Wallace, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
This is your first time, isn't it?
This is my first time.
How you feeling right now?
I don't know. Wendy Wallace and I am the CTE Director, so I would like to ask some updates with some things that are going on throughout our CTE program. Within our CTE program, I would like to show, please provide you with several exciting updates and upcoming opportunities within our CTE programs through our continued commitment to student engagement, workforce development and community partnerships. First thing we have coming up on October 27th at our CTE is the Amazon Fiber Optics Micro Course. This is an opportunity that Amazon has provided for us. Twenty students from Richmond Senior High School and Reach have signed up to participate in this class. This opportunity allows students to gain foundational skills in a high demand field that aligns with local workforce needs, particularly as Amazon expands its presence in our region. We also have partnered with Richmond Community College for the Healthcare Academy at our CTE. We are currently in the process of identifying and selecting current eighth grade students with an interest in healthcare to participate in a two-day healthcare academy hosted by Richmond Community College. Each session will serve 50 students and offer hands-on exposure to healthcare careers, helping students explore future pathways at an early stage. We have dates set for the fall for November the 24th and 25th. And then we have a spring session, April 21st, 20th and 21st. The CTE leadership and curriculum teams are currently in the planning phase to secure grant funding for a new initiative aimed at supporting at-risk students in Richmond County. The PATHS Program, Practical Application Through Hands-on Skills. This program will provide hands-on skill-based learning experiences for students who benefit from non-traditional classroom environments. PATHS will focus on career pathways in carpentry, electrical, HVAC, plumbing and fiber optics, all essential traits experiencing local demand due to industry growth, retirement projections and a declining population. With the arrival of Amazon, we are actively seeking partnerships with local businesses such as Cavco's, Period Cranes and our CTE. These updates reflect a strategic and inclusive approach to expanding CTE opportunities in Richmond County, ensuring our students are both career-ready and community-connected. Thanks.
Wendy, so you're staying busy with Amazon?
All things Amazon and everything in place.
It's just really exciting.
It is. The opportunities that are going to be provided for community member students. So a lot of the work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Local test survey, Ms. Jennifer Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. Tonight, I am reporting to you our plan for the 25-26 local testing program and then asking for your approval. In compliance with North Carolina General Statute 115C-174.12D, Richmond County Schools will complete and submit a local testing program survey to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. First, I will tell you what is included and what is not included in the survey and then what our plan is for local testing for the current school year. So what we do include in our report for local testing is, let me say what we do not include is any federal, state or teacher-directed testing such as NATE, which is a federal test, EOG or EOC, which are state-directed, so we don't include those, or classroom common assessments, which are teacher-directed, so we don't include those. But we do include any testing that we initiate district-wide. For 25-26, our local testing program will include grades four through eight eye-ready reading diagnostic, grades K through eight eye-ready math diagnostic. At grade two, all students will take the COGAT or the Cognitive Abilities Test as a universal screener to identify AIG students. And finally, at grade eight and nine, all of our Math 1 students will take a school net Math 1 benchmark test. And at this time, I would like to take any questions you might have about our local testing program and ask for your approval.
I have a couple of questions if that's okay.
Sure.
And you might have to help me through it, but we used eye-ready last year, is that correct?
Yes.
So, and this might begin before Dr. Smith as well. How did the data, what did the data show during the year as we took those eye-ready tests?
It shows that it's hugely aligned with how they will do on the EOG. So whatever growth they're having in eye-ready for reading and math is very, very closely aligned to what is projected for the EOG. And so teachers use eye-ready for standards-based type lessons like grade level, but they can also put them on what they call a math app, which lets the kids sort of start where they are at their level and, and keep gaining skills so that they can close the gap with whatever the skill gap is. Does that answer your question?
It does. So basically, the eye-ready data that you had showed us what students' gains they made on the EOGs last year in those grade levels.
Hugely aligned.
And if we don't have this, if we don't have this...
So if we don't, well, if we don't have this, it's, it's just one more extra piece of classroom instruction that is differentiated for kids, that is based on what their needs are, it's based on a diagnostic. Teachers can use it for small group instruction. So when I pull kids back to my table and I'm actually giving them instruction on, it's, it's me, the teacher, and then I have kids. Kids can be on what they call their math app, on my ready, in a station and be working at their level. So what it would do is it would eliminate that. It would eliminate the whole idea of kids being, working on their path on the skills that they need. You would eliminate another layer of projection for how kids will perform on the EOG. And there's tons of what they call teacher toolbox lessons that help with small group instructions. If I am a beginning teacher, then I have this great resource I can go to and it will actually group the students according to their data and then give me the lessons I need in my small group or in their station to support them. So all of that would go away. One of the main reasons why we purchased eye-ready was, oh, because we had such an influx of beginning teachers and we had such an influx of teachers who did not go through a four-year degree program and we needed something that would support those teachers in real time in the classroom with lessons.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Smith, is this kind of what the state recommends for these tests or is this completely a local decision?
It's completely a local decision. But eye-ready is a very well-respected evidence-based, research-based program, yes.
Well, the slide's gone.
Every year we give a survey to make sure that teachers and admin want to continue with the programs. And so we don't just purchase them because we think they're good. We definitely get some feedback from them.
And I know we don't want to test them to death, but I was just wondering, I found it interesting, like we do K8 math, but only for eight readings. Is that because we have in-class?
Just now.
And all the others. Sweet in-class.
There's tons of K3 reading.
Yes.
Question, question I have, like, do we do a comparison from year to year? I guess looking at the last, looking at trends from the last so many years just to see if there has been an improvement from year one up to year whatever. Do we do that?
Trends with student data if they are progressing.
Yes.
Yes, and we definitely look at student trend data, probably more so at the school than they do. I would say that your administrators and your instructional coaches probably have a better handle on student trend data. We look more at grade level trend data, content data, like math and reading as a whole, and school data. And I will tell you that based on what we see with eye-ready, because we do track it, we do see that those that use it with fidelity have really strong data. And you have some teachers that, you know, they've been doing this for so long that they don't need that kind of a program to help them and so we don't like force them into doing it. It really is supportive for people who need that extra support.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you. And now for our accountability report.
So do we need to vote on that?
Yes, that's right. I'm sorry, actually.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation for testing.
Got it. First by Mr. Tillman, second by Mr. Ball. Any further discussion? All favor by saying aye. All opposed? Okay, that is passed. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
All right, now we're ready for our accountability report. I'm pleased to bring to you our annual testing and accountability report for 24-25 and thank you for this opportunity to share with you the results, the hard work of our schools that they're doing every day. We have with us tonight many of our school administrators because we strongly believe in teamwork. As together we share our challenges and we share our celebrations, that's what we want to talk about tonight. A few of the celebrations I'd like to bring to your attention are that Richmond County Schools is leading the region with proficiency scores with ratings in the top three and 19 out of 22 indicators across districts in our region that are similar in demographics. These proficiency results show evidence of meeting our target to focus on instructional framework quality and strategic planning with consistent use of student data. Another big celebration to end 24-25 is our cohort graduation rate. Overall, our district grad rate spiked upwards five points over the previous year. This is strong evidence of meeting our target for dropout prevention and student tracking initiatives. We would like to express appreciation to the high school administrative teams as they collaborate with the Dropout Prevention Coordinator, Mr. Arthur Gillum, making every effort to graduate every student. English learner progress data is also trending upward as we increase the number of students meeting their progress goals and exiting. Again, with this, we see strong evidence in these results that we met our target to emphasize language support in the classroom and pushing awareness for EL standards. We would like to express appreciation to the dedicated English learner department and Mr. Marco Alcivar in particular for the incredible work it took to meet this target and carry the work forward to the current school year. So those are some celebrations and now let's look a little closer. This is the 24-25 Year at a Glance Snapshot for Grade Level Proficiency. And a few things to notice about this slide are, first, the performance indicators are in order from high to low by proficiency, which means, as you can see, our sixth grade math scores were the highest proficiency scores in our district, followed in second place by our science at grade eight scores. Second thing I'll call to your attention are the blue bars, which represent the areas where proficiency scores increased over last year. We have increases in proficiency in nine out of 18 tests. On this chart, science testing is indicated by the purple bars. Science testing, including biology, were newly implemented this year. So as we all know, when the state implements a new test, we do not compare the scores to previous years and typically the scores may be lower in the first year of implementation. I would also like to bring your attention to grade three reading at the bottom of the chart, which has become a statewide conversation. Grade three reading is identified as an area of improvement at the state level with a focus on reading comprehension. So this third grade reading performance is not just a Richmond County thing. It has affected districts across the state. It is being looked at carefully and addressed at the state level. Breaking the numbers down to content areas, here we can see reading proficiency by grade level. Our fourth grade reading is leading grade level proficiency for the district. And when we look at our reading proficiency composite compared to surrounding districts with similar demographics and socioeconomic data, overall Richmond County Schools ranks third for the region. In your packet, you have each grade level for reading regional comparison data so that you can see how each grade level for reading compared regionally. Our EOG grade school math results show a 2-point gain overall from last year with grade six exceeding the state overall math grade level proficiency and also exceeding grade six math state proficiency by three points. And we can see that comparison on this chart. Comparing math scores to surrounding districts with similar demographics and socioeconomic data, RCS overall math ranks second for the region and just below the state average overall. In your packet, you can see the regional math comparison data also by grade level. Again, while we see a dip in science scores due to re-standardizing and rolling out the new science assessments, this is typical of any re-standardizing year in any subject area. We're also encouraged by the state not to compare assessment results to previous years in these re-standardizing years. Compared to surrounding districts with similar demographics and socioeconomic data, our overall science ranks second in the region and just behind the state proficiency rate. So you can see here that even though we experienced a dip in our science scores, we're still in a good place with our regional proficiency ranking. Grade level proficiency grades nine through 12 is measured by performance scores in biology, English II, Math I and Math III. All high schools are included in this composite. That's Ashley Chapel, Ninth Grade Academy, Early College and Richmond Senior. Remember that we cannot compare biology to previous year's scores because of the re-standardizing. Looking at English II, it remains at relatively the same place, just over a point off last year's scores, while Math III shows a big gain of over 10 points from last year. Here's our biology regional comparison. English II. Here's Math I. And while our Math I scores look low, when compared to the surrounding districts with similar demographics and socioeconomic data, Richmond County Schools overall Math I ranks third for the region and only five points off the state proficiency average. Math III regional. And now we're up to grad rate. This slide shows that our four-year graduation rate for all of our high schools combined has remained stagnant within a three-point range for the past several years. But then we see a five-point spike at the end of 2025. We are at a district grad rate of 84%, which is the highest rate we've seen in five years. While that gain may look modest to some, these results strongly indicate that our cohort graduation rate, strategic planning, with our exit request process, we have a student tracking process, we have monthly CGR facilitated audit meetings and dropout prevention coordinator and program. Because of all of these things we put in place, we believe that this is why we're seeing such positive results. Our dropout prevention coordinator, Arthur Gillum, has done an excellent job. Our dropout prevention coordinator, Arthur Gillum, has done an excellent job with our school administrators with our graduation rate. Here's Early College. And again, we see exemplary graduation results, which demonstrates that Richmond County Schools are turning out students prepared for post-secondary plans. We're very proud of that. Richmond Senior High shows an increase of nearly five points in their grad rate, which is indicative of all the supports we've put in place for Richmond Senior High School students. Our focus for the past two years has been to have a dropout prevention person and program in action, and we're seeing strong evidence that this strategy is paying off. Under the alternative accountability model, Ashley Chapel uses three years of data in accountability reporting. So when we look at their grad rate, it's three years' worth of data. I don't just report one year of data. So what you're looking at on this slide are three years' worth of data. However, with our targeted strategies to keep students in school with consistent, intensive support, Ashley Chapel continues to build a strong program. Here's one of our celebrations. English learner progress saw a huge gain this year and ended up twelve points, breaking our historical trend. As we continue phase two of our EL standards in the classroom strategic plan, we expect to see even greater gains. EL progress is a huge part of many of our schools' performance grades, so this large increase was great to see due to all the efforts of Mr. Marco Alcivar, his ML staff, as well as our regular classroom teachers. I wanted to add in kind of a brag board for our CTE program now under the direction of Ms. Wendy Wallace. Our CTE department continues to do amazing things for students in Richmond County. The 2425 results show that the overall state proficiency is just one point off last year. Performance-based measurements, or PBM, show an increase of nearly ten points, and credential proficiency also shows a gain of four points. Excuse me. To sum up our accountability here, Richmond County Schools has much to celebrate compared to other similar districts in our region. Richmond County Schools has much to celebrate compared to other similar districts in our region. We were in the top three in nineteen out of twenty-two areas in increased grade level performance and nine out of eighteen assessment indicators. In our high schools, we show some loss in proficiency, but our cohort graduation rate has spiked upwards nearly five points, and excluding the COVID year, that puts us at the highest rate we've been at in ten years. And finally, we targeted English learner progress as a focus, and our results show that English learner progress saw a huge increase of twelve points for students meeting progress goals and exiting the program. I included a targets for improvement slide just as an FYI, but I'm not going to cover that because it's covered in the district improvement plan, so I'm not going to take the time to read through all of that for you, but I did want to include it as an FYI. With that, I will say thank you for your time examining our school performance results with me tonight, and at this time, I would invite you to ask any questions you might have.
Got so many, I don't know where to begin.
So I've just got a simple one. When I first got on board, kind of the crutch was always COVID, COVID, COVID. We discussed pre-COVID numbers versus where we are now. What do we look like there? I mean, I know that it shows about the 2020-ish, but...
Um, we can go back and I can show you those numbers. We have a year-over-year report that we can look at, but we were strongly encouraged not to compare our current results with the COVID year. So much has changed and so much time has gone by, but I would be glad to pull that out for you.
Just out of curiosity, I would like to know, you know, where we stand now versus pre-COVID. I'm glad we're not saying that word a whole lot anymore either.
This is the first year I didn't report that.
I know.
But I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I guess for me, the question I had is the cohort graduation rate with Ashley Chapel School. It's been a big, you know, drop from twenty-two all the way to twenty-five. So I'm just kind of curious, has there been, what has changed for that number to kind of increase? I guess if that makes sense, or...
Pardon me. That's a great question, and I think one, one of the main fundamental answers for that is they have a very fluid student population. And you can see that in their persistence rate at eighty-nine percent, and the students who are included in the grad rate are also included in the persistence rate, which includes all students at the school. But just to try to give an answer to that, it's just hard to tell. It depends on that fluid population, where the students are, how long did they stay at the school, what were their, I mean, just a lot. What's in their transcript, just all of the graduation stuff we have to tend to.
It's like, for me, I mean, yeah, I work in juvenile justice, so I deal with a lot of kids that oftentimes are, people give up on because of their situation. And so for me, I just don't want to have a situation where these kids kind of get left behind because I see that, I've seen that happen in the system. And so I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we have the adequate resources and tools necessary to help them be successful.
I very much support and appreciate your comments. This year, Mr. Gillum, our dropout prevention coordinator, yes, taking a more active role in the cohort graduation auditing and facilitating audit meetings and just really embracing all of our high schools as far as their graduation is.
Can I just add, Ashley Chapel has all of the same educational resources that every other school does. We always make sure that we include them, and they have an instructional coach, they have social worker guidance counselor, they have all the things. So we definitely want to make sure that we keep them as inclusive as everybody else. If I could just add, I would say, and Monica, you can certainly say, but there is a huge attendance issue at Ashley Chapel that they come back every single day that affects that number. And so I would, and it's not, it's not a teacher attendance because they are there every day, all day.
And if I may add, I think it's important that we remember that that's three years of data, and so a lot of times what happens is, because as Jennifer said, that population is so fluid, there are students always entering and exiting Ashley Chapel. And so that cohort, we, we have to just remember that when students come to Ashley Chapel, they don't necessarily come, or in the past, they didn't come knowing when they were supposed to graduate. So that in itself was an issue. So what that particular data shows with that drop is indicative of some of those issues as well. So now, fortunately, there have been processes and procedures put in place that guarantees that the issues that you're concerned about really are not concerns that you need to be worried about as much, because I can tell you for sure that there are things in place now at Ashley Chapel that make sure that students are aware of the resources and the means to graduate, if that is what their mind is set on. And there are people chasing them down for them to be at school, in the building, people busting into houses, following them, doing all the things to make sure that they have what they need to graduate. And I just think that that dip was because there was just a gray area and lapse of time in which some dots needed to be connected to make sure that all of the people were in the right places, doing the right things to make sure the students' needs were being met.
So Monica, for example, I'm eighteen years old, I'm at Ashley Chapel. I found out I only have six credits, and I need twenty-two to graduate. So I might not be able to graduate until I'm twenty, twenty-one years old, and don't forget, they've already been in high school for two or three years, so you don't meet the four-year graduation cohort rate. Is that right?
Right.
So that's what you found, that people were not keeping up with students and credits and age and all that good stuff. So now it's coming back to roost, roost to us now because of what happened two and three and four years ago.
Right.
Did I say that correctly?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wherever they migrated into.
Right.
Right. And that was an expert answer. Thank you, Monica.
Every student, every student in the ninth grade after their first semester, and every guidance counselor should know the age of the child and how many credits that child has. No ifs, ands, and buts.
And I'll just say, I appreciate, appreciate you all explaining that because a lot of times you look at data, it doesn't tell the whole story. And that's the thing, you know, we sometimes get lost in that, but when I see a dip, there's a reason for it, and so I really appreciate you explaining it clearly.
So this stuff has taken place many, many years ago, right? So Jennifer, the questions I have, and again, I sat in the seat of a principal, I sat in the seat of Joe C., I know all stuff about testing, you know? And I would never say I was disappointed in anything because people work hard every day. Principals work hard, principals, teachers, everybody works hard. But I am concerned about third grade reading in the state of North Carolina, how they can always say that twenty-nine percent of our kids are on grade level and only, what, forty-six percent in the state. There's something wrong with that, and I gather you guys have been having discussions about that. But I am concerned about biology and English two because I know there's a lot of turnover at high school and teachers and so forth, so we got to get better there. We, that's something we got to get better on.
You are exactly right. We have got to get better.
So maybe we can find out in a couple of months what's been going on out there, tell us what we're doing to try, because you don't want to compare apples to oranges because every kid's different every year. I understand that. But maybe let us know what's been going on and how we are going to try to get better with this group of kids.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Now, District Improvement Plan, Dr. Kate Smith.
So good evening, Chairman Siderfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. We have looked at the data from our individual school performance grades and created a district plan to support the schools and their progress with their achievement and growth. And so before you, you all have the action steps that we created for the school improvement planning, and much of these are very much the same things that we do every year. We've added some in there that are a little more specific to helping administrators how to look at the data and have a conversation, a crucial conversation with grade levels, content areas that maybe are not making the progress that we need. And so at this time, I'm going to ask you all to just take the next thirty days to review these action steps, and then we will come back if you have any questions or thoughts or considerations, and then we'll go.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doc Smith. Instruction updates, Stephen King. Stephen, we'll let, let the masses exit real quick. Monica, thank you for helping us out.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Siderfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. So as you probably noticed, we've been working hard to make some updates on our boardroom here, done some paintings, decluttering, installed some new technology, which should help with the sound and the streaming process that we have. I know it's in the hallway, the TV monitors in the back corners just opens up the room so much for hanging here. I'm hard, hard for me to see sometimes, but I'm able to see most everything projected up there. I hope the monitors at each station is working out good for you. So just a couple of quick things. So at the high school, the old greenhouse there that's connected to F Bill, the polycarbonate panels, just, they're just from sun and temperature over the years have just deteriorated, so we've got a plan in place to replace the roof, the wall panels and that. Move into the renovations at Night Guard Academy. We've gone through and taken everything off the wall, all the posters, everything that in preparation for paint. The lockers and the weight equipment is going to be listed on GoDills, so I'll have you approve that. So I met with Asher Williams, paint representative, last week. We walked the building, did some tests on the walls, we didn't know what kind of paint we have, and he's helped me put together some specifications so we can get an RFP out, get pricing on painting the entire interior of the school. We met with the building and fire inspector, walked through the building and just showed some of the renovations that we'll need to do, add some bathrooms back into some classrooms, lower in some toilets and urinals and sinks, and just get it all ready back for elementary. So we're, we're working on RFPs for painting playgrounds, we want to have playgrounds, some fencing, just a number of things. Any questions on Night Guard Academy? Or Night Guard Academy, I should say.
We'll be ready for next year, though, right?
Yes, sir. The James Building, so we've moved all the staff out of the James Building now there. How's it? Former Night Guard Academy. Speaking of Dr. Carter, I think he's going to bring something to you next month for meeting some options of disposing of that building. We'll be moving forward for that. Questions on James Building?
How many staff with that that moved?
Oh, gosh. Julie Brigham was the last one we moved. We moved EC pre-K. I'm not sure.
I couldn't remember who I was still with.
About twenty-two to start with. A lot of them. So out at the high school, the baseball field renovation project's well underway. I'm sure you probably rode by and seen it. All the grass was stripped off, some topsoil stripped off. So they've been doing the trenching, installing drainage and irrigation. All this really nice equipment this company has, it's all laser guided, GPS elevation. So I'm very impressed with the company that's putting in, should have a very nice product at the end. So moving into the running track, oh, let me back up to the baseball field. So substantial completion should be November fifth. I think we're well on track with that, and final completion will be in November nineteenth. Any questions on the baseball field?
Is there any kind of maintenance to that? Do you flush it every now and then? I was just, I was wondering, it's wild looking, I've never seen anything like it, as far as the drainage.
Yeah, I'm not, no. Sometimes you get into drainage with roots and stuff growing into it, but we're at, there shouldn't really be any. There are, there will be some clean outs if we ever had a clog. You can take a, like a sewer jetter or something and jet the lines out. I don't just, just paint any maintenance associated with it.
So it should be good for years and years and years. That's excellent.
Did they receive, when they tore all that stuff up, Stephen, did they receive the problems we were having?
I asked that question. I was anticipating seeing a lot of clay. It was my understanding that the clay, the impermeable surface is what the problem was, water couldn't drain through it. According to the company, the problem was that we had about six inches of organic matter built up on the field from, from over the years. So it had... So basically, we had a six-inch sponge that said...
Like organic matter of grass clippings?
Grass clippings, yes, sir. So my next question was, you know, and one of the reasons I even asked that, I was out there one day and there's moving some dirt around and it's just a huge dust cloud. And again, I was anticipating it being clay, but there was a lot of sand. So I did ask the question, so how do we end up with six inches of organic material and how do we prevent that? So they recommend, it's called a deep-tine aerate. So we typically aerate about two to three inches deep. Sometimes it's core aerating, which is little plugs that come out of the ground, sometimes it's just spikes. This company recommends a deep-tine aerating, so it'll be eight to ten inches deep instead of like a three-eighths inch diameter core plug, it'll be a three-quarter inch plug. They're really turning over the organics, bringing it to the top. Those organics are removed from the field and then we bring in sand and drag it in and it goes down in that hole. So you're really actually turning over the sod. A lot of golf courses and professional fields, that's how they maintain it. So there was something that I inquire about and we're working with our current athletic fields maintenance company to renew their contract and that's something that I've kind of paused on because we have not done that before and I, I'm inquiring about that and I think that would be a good investment to do going forward, maintaining the integrity of that field.
Can you say the final completion is gonna be eleven nineteen? So all the grass we laid back down, all the dirt, all the clays we put back down?
That's...
Wow, that's a good timeline. You're quick.
Yeah, that's, again, this company, I mean, they have the right equipment, the right people in place. We're kept well informed every Monday morning when we receive a weekly update. I've been very well pleased with...
Just one question about it, I, because I did my yard the other day, I put some winter rye out. Of course, a baseball field is gonna be winter rye. With that grass going down, which is probably gonna be close to dormant, the Bermuda, have you checked to make sure that we can put winter rye down? Because I know it's not, it hadn't rooted to the, it won't root to the ground.
I have not.
Might be something that we might just want to ask real quick is if, if something happens to the grass, they'll, they'll come back and say, well, you put winter rye on it.
Yeah. This company intends, as part of the contract, they'll, they'll provide us with a, this is how you take care of this, this turf, you know, the next two months, next six months, eight months, ten months, one year, two year, five year, ten year. So they, they're, they, they will be providing that and they'll work hand in hand with us to, to take care of it. No questions on the baseball field? So moving to the track, the asphalt surface and run surface was milled and removed. The, the long jump and the high jump areas were, they couldn't get their asphalt milling machine on those areas to dig that out, so they just ended up tearing it all out and putting it back in concrete. So now we're just in the twenty-eight day period to let the asphalt cure. And I asked, you know, I know concrete has to cure to achieve its strength, but I wasn't sure about the asphalt because a lot of times they pave a road and you're driving on it the same day. Problem is the off-gassing of the asphalt. So they can't put the rubber surface over the asphalt until it's off-gassed enough to where it won't cause a problem. So that's where twenty-eight days come in with that. But the running surface is scheduled to be installed somewhere between the seventeenth and, seventeenth of November and December fourth. So they just have to make, you know, make sure there's certain temperature. If we happen to have a dip in temperature, it has to be, I think, fifty degrees above to do that for a certain period of time. They don't anticipate in our region for it to be a problem.
It looks good out there. I was out there the other night.
Any questions on the running track? And then finally, the Mosley Plumber Design of the LJ Bell Replacement School, we completed the grant application and Dr. Farrell submitted that on the thirtieth. So we, we anticipate hearing something back definitely by the end of the year on that. So fingers crossed on that. No question on that? All right, so moving into a service agreement, your consideration and approvals. So we're taking to Supreme Filter Service, they're a new five-year contract, twenty-five, twenty through two thousand thirty. The contract amounts twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, sixty-two cents per quarter. The filters are replaced quarterly, so eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, forty-eight cents per year contract. So this contract would include labor and material to replace all the air filters at our school's and plus the central office. This, this service, Supreme Filter Services, they've been providing this service to rich mechanic schools since two thousand ten, so they've been doing this for about fifteen years now. The original contract, I'll bring to your attention, from two thousand fifteen dollar amount has not changed until two thousand nineteen, when we went from, we changed the type of air filter. Again, remember two thousand nineteen was around COVID time. So typically, this is the kind of air filter material that people use in their home, just whatever you pick up at Lowe's or Walmart. So when we first started using it, we were using what they call a MR five, commercial grade filter, you can kind of see the thickness over there. So in two thousand nineteen, in the onset of COVID, considered indoor air quality, we went to a MR five, or eight, rather. So it's a thicker, thicker filter, just more filtration. So with that being said, the contract in two thousand nineteen did increase, but only by twenty-two, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents, you know, across the fifteen facilities. And, you know, like everything, you know, materials spiked during that time of year. So twenty-three, twenty-two hundred dollar increase in two thousand nineteen has not increased since then. And I will remind you, we, we have, we added three new buildings, high school, mental spring, bravery hikes, that also have filters in them. We, we did remove some mobile classrooms, ten, ten actually, but the net of that, removing mobile classrooms and adding the buildings, we actually have added fourteen new filters that have to be repaired or replaced, right? So this, I will say that this work is done after hours. We don't want, Supreme Filters doesn't go in the classroom. Miss Sally's teaching math and they're on a ladder and trying to change the air filters. I mean, they do it after hours, weekends, holidays, nights, you know, whatever they do to, to make it happen. Supreme Filters does all the schools, for Scotland County School, all the schools for Cleveland County School, all of First Health Facilities, Moore County, Re, Hook County, Montgomery County, Richmond County, with all those. So the contract, again, going back from two thousand nineteen, Supreme Filters is, is gonna hold the price the same, eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars per year.
Make the motion. The motion to accept the contract by Minister Etheridge, you have a second?
Set.
Second, Mr. Tillman, there may be discussion.
And I understand you just say, we've had a contract with them since two thousand ten? Okay. I was thinking, well, being new and not having been here when this has been brought up before, I thought this was a new contract. And I was like, gosh, that's a lot of money, but...
I would say, I do appreciate you, the demonstration of showing the different filters and, and, you know, why, you know, so I appreciate that and I appreciate the research as far as going back, looking at when we funded them, or how much we paid these years. I appreciate your homework on that because those were some questions that I know I was gonna ask and I'm pretty sure some other...
And I use the same coders in my house now, I'm reminded I need to go check and change when I want to get home, so thank you very much.
Supreme Filters will do it for you.
Well, you changed my mind because I was sitting here thinking, ah, there's no way I can agree with that. That's a lot of money and that would bring a lot of raises to our maintenance people that need it. But, I mean, we've been doing it and, so you helped me.
After hour part, you know, we might consider, because trust me, I'm an advocate for our folks getting all they can, so...
Yeah, especially if they're using our equipment. Didn't I read that like for the high areas and all?
Yes, ma'am. But, and that's common, let's say when Dak Trumets came and worked on the school board, they'll bring a lift or rent a lift and charge us fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars, but if we have that and we can provide that, save that money, that's, that's what we do.
Right.
So we have a second by, who is it, Mr. Tillman seconded? And then further discussion, all in favor by saying aye? All opposed? Thanks, Steve. Ms. Jordan, budget amendments. And resolutions, I think, isn't it?
Yep. Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. You have before you budget amendment thirty-six and thirty-seven. These are actually for last school year and it's great, we've never had it this late, but it is due to us receiving the one point three million dollars in ESER funds. So that was, when I got that email, I was so excited and especially on October third when I saw it in our bank account. Then I knew we really had it.
Right.
So the budget amendment is thirty-six for capital outlay funds is an increase of three oh four, five eighty-six, ninety-four, due to the lease of school buses, that's the auditor entry that they give us, where the state pays for that on our behalf. And then the one million dollars that we put back in capital outlay due to the ESER fund reimbursement. Budget amendment thirty-seven is other local funds, three hundred and four, forty, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents went back into fund eight for ESER funds. We're seeking approval for budget amendment thirty-six and thirty-seven.
I make the motion to approve the budget amendments.
Have a motion by Ms. Ornsby to approve budget amendment thirty-six and thirty-seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Etheridge, or any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We've got him approved.
Now you have the twenty-five, twenty-six budget resolution. This includes state funds, fifty-eight million, one eighty-eight, oh eighty-two, twenty. That is a decrease from last year of one point nine million, but that's due to we have not received all the state funding yet. The local funds is one million, seven fifty-one, six oh five, fifty. That is also a little bit of a decrease. We didn't appropriate as much fund balance. We did receive an increase from the county of six hundred and forty-four, two hundred and ninety-two. That was the local increase we did receive this year from the county. Federal funds is, right now it's four, four million, six thirty-six, seven forty-five, fifty-one. That's a little bit decreased from our last year overall budget, but they have not released any funds for the twenty-sixth. We're working on carryover right now from last year for federal funds. Capital outlay funds is four million, four sixty-eight, seven, two seventy-six, fifty. That is a little decrease from last year, but you know, we got some increases from the county last year of three hundred and eleven additional, three hundred and eleven thousand for additional funds. We had three hundred and twenty-six thousand that we used with R and R and three hundred and ninety-three with ABM. Plus we had appropriated one million in fund balance. Typically, this budget is two point four million. But the county has been giving us, and then the extra money, this year the county in that budget is giving us the extra nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the baseball field. They've already, we've already got that in there. And three hundred and ninety-six oh sixteen, and that's for the track. So that additional money is in that.
Which one, Dawn, is usually?
Infant for capital outlay. I went state, local, federal, and then capital outlay. See that one?
Yes.
Four point four.
Yes.
I did appropriate six hundred thousand in fund balance due to, we do owe six hundred thousand dollars to Muter. I didn't want, I mean, we've got some local, we've got the R and R if we need it, but I know there's still discussion and all of that, so I just felt like I needed to get that in there.
What's R and R?
R and R is the recovery and restoration, it's lottery funds up there. We did use a little bit of that for...
I just remembered the...
For the construction. And then...
So if we can save it, six hundred thousand.
Well, actually, you know, we appropriated a million last year, then we got a million back. But I had to, I had a seven hundred thousand dollar bill that we got in July that was really for June, that made me pay it in June. So we still had about two hundred and seventy that we didn't use of the million we appropriated last year. So we, we got a little savings on that, so...
I'm glad you're good with numbers.
Let me tell you, I made Paul give me all the audit entries for this and I did them step by step to make sure everything looked right because I've never, I'm like, it was just so confusing. You can't cross years and move expenses, it was, it was a mess. I was just glad we got it, though. I was willing to do whatever. Child nutrition, that budget is six million, one fifty-nine, eight twenty-six, ninety-six. I did decrease that budget, they are still appropriating some fund balance, but I just decreased their federal monies that they got in or the reimbursements because I didn't feel like, they didn't need that much in there. And other local funds is two million...
Okay, I'm sorry, you're, you're on the slide, you're right.
Two million, six seventeen, two fifty, forty-seven. That is decreased, but those funds come in all throughout the year. We don't have all of those yet. So the total budget resolution is eighty-seven million, eight twenty-one, seven eighty-six, sixty-four. Do you have any questions?
And the federal money that we have not received, I know with the shutdown, I saw someone...
They said that's not really gonna affect that. We typically don't get, get it till November, I mean, deep October, November. We did have a webinar today and Jennifer said they have gotten the GANs for it, so that means it's coming.
Okay.
So that'll just be, within a couple of weeks, we should be able to, those will start coming in, hopefully. But she said the shutdown should not affect those because they were already approved monies. As long as they got the GANs in that, hopefully, but, but they'll get it.
As long as we don't go into fund balance, I'm okay. I think the whole board would, would shake their heads on that one.
We're working hard. We really are. So we are seeking board approval for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget resolution.
Motion to approve it.
Make the motion by Mr. Baldwin, second by Mr. Etheridge, any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dawn. Policies for approval. Mr. Melvin Ingram, sitting there quietly all night, haven't you?
Good evening Chairman Satterfield, Dr. Farrell, members of the board. Policies for adoption, we have a list of policies presented last month for review. There's only a slight change with policy thirty-four hundred. It was recommended that we add a statement to pass. Pass may be used for elective course but may not be awarded for non-elected graduation requirements unless a student transfers from an unaccredited or international school. I, I was just asking, what I can ask, that we waive the thirty-day review and approve the policy as presented with, with that slight change recommended by Little County School Board Association. So this being the conclusion of the thirty-day review period, I would like to present the following policies for adoption. Thirty-four hundred, evaluation of student progress. Thirty-four twenty, student promotion and accountability. Thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities and student organizations. Forty twenty-three, seventy-two, thirty-three, pregnant and parenting student and employees. Forty forty, seventy-three, ten, staff-student relations. Forty-two, forty, seventy-three, twelve, child abuse and related threats to child safety. Forty-three, thirty-one, assaults and threats.
And what was the policy you said had more change on it?
Thirty-four hundred, it's related to the evaluation of student progress. I think a big, big part of that is making sure that grades reflect student mastery, but the part I was talking about changing was the pass fail. It's saying that you can't use pass fail, but unless... It's saying that you can't use pass fail, but unless, um, the students are transfers from an unaccredited or international school.
So do we need to do that one separately, don't we? We would need, well, we'd first need to be able to waive the thirty-day period.
Make a motion that we waive the thirty-day period for Policy Thirty-four Hundred.
I have a motion by Mr. Tillman to waive the thirty days. Second by Ms. Ornsby. Any discussion? All favor by saying aye. All opposed? Okay. So now you want, uh, we need a motion to approve all the policies that Mr. Mr. Ingram just called out.
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Etheridge, second by Mr. Baldwin. Any discussion on those policies? All favor by saying aye. All opposed? We got that done, Mr. Ingram.
We also have in Borodax a list of policies that I would like to present for thirty-day review. Thirteen, thirteen, thirteen-ten, forty-oh-two, Parent Involvement, thirteen-ten, parental inspection and objection to instructional materials. Thirty-three twenty, School Trips. Thirty-five-ten, Religious Base Exemptions from School Programs. Forty-one-ten, domicile or residence requirements. Fifty-ten-four, sixty-one-ten-seven, seventy-two-sixty-six, Emergency Epinephrine Auto-Injector Devices. Fifty-thirty, Community Use of Facilities. Fifty-seventy, seventy-three-fifty, Public Records Retention, Release and Disposition. Sixty-one-twenty-five, Administering Medicines to Students. Sixty-three-forty, Transportation Service Vehicle Contracts. Seventy-one-hundred, Recruitment and Selection Personnel. And seventy-eight-twenty Personnel Files. I just want to make particular note of fifty-thirty, could we discuss that last time? Community Use of Facilities. We collaborated with our school attorney and just wanted to see any questions you might have about that.
Do you want to pull that one up or? Anyway, fifty-thirty is the facility rental policy and the administration has brought some proposed language related to private use of school facilities that I know we had discussed as a board. And so we wanted to note that one. And if you'd like us to bring it up, we can. I would just.
Yeah, the question that I had, and we talked about it, cause Darryl, Darryl raised it last time, and I think it was a really good conversation to do. I do think that like, like for funerals and stuff like that, um, the use of that. I'd like to see it where it says current students, current faculty.
Okay.
I don't know about what other board members would think. It's cleaner that way, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna be a little opposed to that simply because, you know, um, I mean, I, I get hurt students and staff. But I mean, you know, I think it should be open to all that that wanna use it. I mean, you know, I, they did a, a session at the school board training on study use. And so I think like, we really need to give a little, a lot more thought as I, I guess. Thinking back to the situation where we had this one, you know, I'm just speaking from my experience where I had this one. Our family that reached out and wanted to use our facility, kid had passed, but I'm even a former student. I think for me, I think if it's a situation like anybody should be able to use it. So as long as they follow our guidelines, um, they explain to us in, in the school board or training where the liability falls. And I mean, we can write it up and have them to, uh, to, to sign off on it. I just think it should be open to, to all that wanna use it. That's just me.
So the way the draft is this before you is that in general, um, schools would not, and this, look again, this is a proposal that we can change, are generally not for private ceremonies such as parties or memorials. If you wanna scroll down, it's in large, yeah, right there. Except for funerals for current students and employees. And Dr. Farrell, we talked about current students, current or former employees would also be tied. So the, the philosophy of this draft is, in general, our schools are, are not for private events. They, they are available for educational, recreational, civic and cultural activities. But that we would make an exception for that type of memorial. So you can either broaden that exception or you could open them for all private rentals, I think. There was a concern, practical concern there about general wear and tear and also the wear on the staff. If it's any sort of private event. And how, how frequently that might start happening.
I haven't read this one thoroughly because it's for review for next, for next month. I thought we were talking, that we said that somewhere in there we were gonna put only, they would only use auditorium, no other part of the school or the.
That I didn't catch. I didn't recall, but, but we certainly can. I think that's also something that, you know, part of what the policy says is that the superintendent makes a list of what facilities are available.
Because we talked about like the cafeteria, we're not gonna, the cafeteria would not be open. Is this where we would need to put that or just assume?
So right now, you have a list of what's available. I mean, so the classrooms aren't on it, right? What is on it? It's currently cafeterias are on the list.
Does that include the kitchen?
I would say that is a level of detail that probably doesn't need to be in policy. I think the staff could, the superintendent could set that because each school may be different.
Okay. Yep.
But you can put it in policy if the board, you know, if it's important to the board that it only be auditoriums.
Well, I do have, I do think that we, they shouldn't be cooking in, in school. So I guess we're saying that if they have a funeral, they, they can have like a reception?
I mean, we haven't gotten to that level of detail. I think you could certainly say, right now, it says facilities may be rented for memorial services or funerals for students or employees. You could say school auditoriums may be rented. I don't know if all of your schools have auditoriums or.
Well, I'm okay with, um, just let the superintendent make that decision. Um, instead of, I don't know. I just remember what we were talking about last month and I thought, well, I don't see it in there. But I, like I said, I hadn't read it carefully because it's not until next time. But if we're gonna vote on it next time, we need to know, but.
Right, I think we just wanted to just go through it because if the board knows there's a change you wanted to make before next time. But yeah, we're not asking you to vote on it tonight.
So if there's something in there that we wanna change, we need to call and make it known so that, so we can vote on it next week, next month?
Well, you can either share it now and if there's consensus, we'll bring a different draft next month. Or if you're not sure yet, then you can bring it up next month and we can change it during the meeting.
Cameron, how many, how many forms have you received for, or calls you've received for funerals?
About one.
Sorry?
About one a month.
One a month? And they're just from all different schools, right?
Yes, sir. They've not been like for once. Usually.
Just know it's, it's awful, awful time in somebody's life. It is, it's just, it's just awful. But I also go ahead and think about our personnel and our people of, if we open it up to everybody, not current, just not current people, but current and former, how many phone calls would we get? How much, how much taxing that would put on our staff? Cause our staff's got to be there. It's their schools, it's your schools, our schools. That's the only thing that concerns me. I agree with Ronald. You know, we, we, we need to open our facilities, but how much do we open up our facilities? And that's where I'm stuck.
There's a caveat in there about, you know, about there's not availability of staff, but that's a hard decision to make.
Yeah.
I guess for me, it'd be different if we, if we were a county that had facilities in place that people can go out and use. That's one thing. But as you see, we don't have a lot of, um, facilities for larger venues for funerals. And so sometimes I think people try, you know, try to look at other, um, you know, larger facilities for that. And I'm thinking, sitting here thinking like, there's been time like people may do gospel singing. You know, um, so are we saying that folks that from the church that wanna do a gospel singing, um, program at a, at a auditorium at a gym can't do it? So it's just a lot to kind of think of and, and the last.
I think they would be able to.
That would be a lot.
All right, then, I just think like, as a taxpayer, I mean, I think, you know, gotta look at it from the standpoint of folks that's in our community are taxpayers. I mean, we can't just deny them, I mean, using our facilities. I mean, we have, have general liability insurance. Uh, we get right into the contract where they can have, uh, liability, show that they have liability insurance. It's, that's some things that we can do to kind of help offset some things. I think that's just me. But I just, you know, for me, I just, it's kind of hard for me, you know, if, if you have a person that went to school here, worked here, but no longer is currently in the system and something happens in their family, we gonna say, well, no, you can't use our facilities. To me, that's kind of slap in the face to me. That's just how I feel about it.
Yeah, what's wrong with that? If you have a thirty-year teacher of rich content that passes away, they're, you know, or they, they get disqualified as not a current employee, you know?
I think I'll share is even, again, that one of the options was to add former employees. But if we were to say former students, that is really not a provision at all. That kind of opens it to the whole county. You could say.
Calls you get or the forms you get, say, once a month, do they just come, who do they come from mostly?
Just people in the community. Usually they'll call and say they're inquiring about renting a funeral or renting a facility.
So you don't know if they were, well, I mean, they, they would say if they were, you would know if they were current student or something. That was a stupid question on my part. I was just thinking out loud.
Do we know like how other school districts, I guess, surrounding us handle situations like this? Have there been any conversations or looked at their policies to see how that they have it worded in their policy or how they address this?
I don't. I know specifically Scotland doesn't allow you other than for current staff and students, but it was very similar to us. And it's part, it's own like their form and not written in their policy. It is like on the form.
And this language, I think, came from the Charlotte Mecklenburg School.
So I know like, you know, I guess whenever, if I remember, I know whenever people use our field facilities, it's a certain form and format that they have to sign off on that. So I guess kind of follow that same format if you're using a gym or auditorium. That spells out what the person is responsible for, kind of like how we do with whenever teams are using our, our fields. Maybe something to think about.
Because if they use our fields, a school person doesn't have to show up, do they?
Well, I think they have, they have to have somebody out there supervising.
They have, they have usually a security guard and custodian.
So if a baseball or softball team is practicing in one of our fields, they have to have somebody there. That's what we're saying.
No, it's contingent on the event.
So, ma'am?
Contingent on the event. So if it were a large or something like a, um, grade early tournament, they would have security.
I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, okay, that's awesome.
Well.
But part of the, I'm sorry, Cory.
Yeah, go ahead.
Part of the conversation we had last month too was like, if the church was asking for the, for the facility for a funeral versus the funeral home. So if a church wants to use the facility, that's okay?
So that's one reason why we changed it because that obviously didn't seem very fair. It should be the same rule regardless of who's asking. So the reason that came up is because your previous policy allowed use of your facilities by nonprofits. And so the question was, well, the church is a nonprofit. When the funeral home calls, that's a business. But in order to address that, the way it's written now is, you know, that this is, you know, the community's use of our facilities is for community events, educational, recreational, civic and cultural activities and not private events. Like, like a family reunion or a birthday party or a funeral in general. And so that way, it, it doesn't matter, you know, if it's the church or the family that's calling, they would get the same answer. Which is, the way it's written, was it a current student or staff? Was it a current or former staff? You know, however you wanna write that, but, um.
That's very confusing.
Again, that was the idea.
And that wasn't communicated in the last case because what was communicated was because it was a for-profit agency.
Well, that, I know that came up. I think what was originally communicated was that we don't do funerals, right?
Cameron, is there any way you can call your buddies in other surrounding counties and find out what they say? And then Joe can give it to us on a Friday update and go, and go from there. Try to get five or six other counties around us so at least we have, we don't wanna be out there on our own by ourselves. Cause I think we have some different opinions on the board, so maybe that'll help us. So we can always table that until we get that in for other information. Thank you, Melvin. I'm sorry. Dr. Farrell, surplus.
Yes, sir. So we are requesting board approval for the following items to be listed for sale on GovDeals. From the ninth grade academy, a set of five hundred lockers, weight room equipment and library books. And from Hamlet Middle School, a golf cart that is not functional, but would be for parts.
I have a motion by Mr. Baldwin, I have a second by Ms. Schuler. Any further discussion?
Just one question. None of the middle schools could use the weight equipment?
A man, I'm putting a friend on that, Dr. Farner.
I'm here for a nursing class, that's why. But my husband is Zach Freeman for the football coach at Rockingham Middle School and they don't have any weight equipment. They used to, but I don't know, that was long before he got there. They said what they do have is very minimal because he often is looking online just to see if there's anything going on sale. But I know at least Rockingham Middle School would probably be interested, which means Hamlet Middle School probably would be too. Because like on graining days, they're either watching film or.
Thank you.
Problem is, we don't have a place to house it. And I've spoken to some of the people about, if you wanna coach them, you have to use it the proper way. And we have people that can train them without hurt. And so the equipment that we have is remarkably old. I mean, I, I guess it could be refurbished, but it is, it's old.
But still, if we still had it, you still couldn't use it because nobody's trained on how to use it at the schools.
Yeah, that's a huge part of it. You really need somebody that knows how to, how to train kids to probably use the stuff so that.
I have a motion by Mr. Baldwin, a second by Ms. Schuler. Any further discussion? All favor by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Farrell, Board Voting Delegates.
Yes, the annual meeting of the North Carolina School Boards Association's delegates is scheduled during lunch that will begin at noon on Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. This important meeting is part of the annual conference and is the opportunity for school board, where school boards can participate in the direction of the School Boards Association's future. Consistent with its bylaws, member boards may appoint up to four voting delegates. Designating the, the delegates must be done by board action. And so I'm bringing that opportunity to you all to decide. And so I'm bringing that opportunity to you all to decide if you would like, uh, voting delegates and how many, up to four, and who you'd like those people to be.
I nominate Ms. Schuler.
Well, so, so if you recall, and I'm going to look this way to Mr. Etheridge and Mr. Tillman. That last year is where Scotty made fun of me. So I would suggest as Mr. Etheridge, Mr. Tillman, Mr. Satterfield and Mr. Baldwin did it last year, that Mr. Mason, that Ms. Schuler and Ms. Hornsby should do it. And then since he laughed so hard, that Scotty Baldwin is the fourth representative.
I think y'all got such comic relief, you four need to do it again. I made that motion.
Thought we were everything.
I don't mind, I'll do it. I'm there anyways, it doesn't matter to me.
We will check, make sure your chair is okay.
Yes, sir. Ms. Schuler, Mr. Hornsby, Mr. Satterfield and Mr. Etheridge, you okay with that?
Yeah.
I agree.
Mr. Tillman, you can take that.
No, are you good? Yes, I'm good.
Good experience, good experience for a little bit.
Do we have to vote on that? All right, so I, so many of these, I can't make a motion. Can I, as the board chairman, I can't make a motion. Can I on this?
Can I? Can I second?
All right, so we got, we got a motion from Mr. Satterfield, Mr. Etheridge, Ms. Hornsby and Ms. Schuler to be voting delegates. Uh, as a second, Mr. Hornsby second, all in favor by saying aye. All opposed?
And I got out of that.
So you got all that down, didn't you? That's comic relief right there.
I did not, but I am certain that Jay did.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you. All right, uh, comments from board members?
I'll start off because I, I had the privilege to watch Richmond Raiders beat West Forsyth. And I also was in that nineteen ninety game. And those three thousand people from Richmond County got up and left because they thought Richmond County was going to lose. And I was with Johnny Clayton, I said, Johnny, we're going to stay to the end. And then that's happened and I said, um, I was there with my brother and, with my brothers. And I said, we're going to stay to the end. And then all that changed. I was so excited to see it happen, so it was great.
Jerry, I wasn't even a Richmond Raider fan at that time. I was still living in Raleigh, I was at that game and I'll never forget it.
Oh, it was awesome.
I had also the.
One in ten, wasn't it?
Near. That was scheduled somewhere else and, and they postponed it because they didn't have enough participation. Uh, I've visited a lot of schools this month, but I went to the, the, the bus department one day. Just sat down with B and G and the ladies up there. And it's so informative how much money we've saved this year by things that they're doing. So that was a good thing. Then I, you know, I enjoyed going to the law conference this year because the sessions that we went through are really good sessions. And, uh, it's, it's really good stuff like that. And then I wanted to read three names out to you, but Tisha, I want you to, you, you say your sister's name out loud. And I know it's hard for you.
Samika, Samika Sanders.
Okay. I want to mention a name, Virgie Smith Clark. Okay? And Marlene White Kimball, I went to her funeral day. Unexpected thing and it, it has really tore me up. And then I was able to go to Avery Elizabeth Davis's funeral on Sunday. I am so glad that I'm a member of Richmond County Schools Board because we're a people group and we care about people. And that's why, you know, the thing about the, using the, the facilities and, and they talked about one of the sessions that we had right at the end, uh, when the, uh, I think it might have been Avery County where they had, or Yancee County, where they had all, all that stuff happened with the Helene flood, the hurricane and the flood. And then they were talking about, and we've got some people we still haven't found yet. But yet they all came together in a small school system and they were basically the schools where, where they had to be. And I didn't see that really in here as a, you know, that's not a part of what it's showing, but, and one of the things that, uh, one of the lawyers kept saying was, if it hasn't happened to you yet, you need to plan for it. And that's something I think we need to be able to do, but, you know, uh, remember these families and remember Avery's family. You remember Marlene's family, remember Virgie's family, remember Tisha. And just don't remember them now, but remember for a long time to come. Cause they're going through some, some tough stuff and it's going to be one of those things where my father died in nineteen seventy-three. I'd love to see him to give him a hug again today, but it's not what happened. So, you know, I think it's just so important that we just try to be the best people, first, you know, people, people that we can be. And love people where they are because you're not guaranteed tomorrow.
Thank you, Jerry.
If I could, I just, um, it's kind of hard to come behind that. But, you know, I agree with everything Jerry said, um, but you, one of the things I really, really like, and I'm going back to this, uh, law conference is, um, I know last year we didn't get a chance to go because of, uh, Hurricane Helene. And I, I really enjoy going to these, uh, trainings because it just, it, it doesn't matter how long you've been on the board. There's always just good information that you need to know, you know? And, and it's just good reminders. And, and like you said, it was just so many sessions that were just phenomenal. I mean, you know, as far as like, um, uh, conflict of interest sessions, um, uh, talking about our role as a board member, because sometimes we can get stuck out there, you know, when it comes to complaints that come to us. And the personal relationships that we may have in this small community, that we sometimes lose focus of what our role is as a board member. So it was just good for me to be able to hear it again and to get those reminders. And then caused, it caused me to do some reflecting, um, on my processes and how I handled things and like that. So I just, I'm just always, I, I, I just eat up those trainings because it's just, like I said, this was just something about this training. It was just something special because there were a lot of topics that were in this training that we had encountered some situations. And I thought that it was just great to hear it. I'm always the one, um, I lean on the board attorney because I'm not an attorney. So if that's the issue, I'm leaning on the board attorney because the, the attorney represents us as a board. And, and the thing, I make the thing like our actions, the thing to me that stood out is our actions, whether it's individually affects this whole board because we are a corporate body, there's no one person that dictate and run this board, you know what I'm saying? So it was just good to get those reminders. And so I was just really, really, uh, overjoyed with getting that. And I would advise, you know, be a new board member, if you get the opportunity to go any trainings, please do it. Cause it doesn't matter if you've been on the board twenty years, one year, whatever, it's always good information to have.
And to go with Ronald on that is that a couple of the sessions, like he said, are things that happened to us in the last couple of board meetings. And from what the attorneys told us is we handled every one of those situations in the correct way. Whether it was a well, so yeah, congratulations Eva. Whether it was a, whether it was received well by other people or community. The board did the right thing and that's why people elected us because we followed what we were supposed to do. Even if it was hard, we did the right thing, so, yeah. Same, I like, this Ronald said it perfectly.
I felt bad not going. First year I missed, now Ronald, you missed, you really made me feel bad.
It was good.
Yeah, you did that. The first one I missed and you make me feel bad.
I'm gonna tell you, it was so good, Bobby, so I went and printed off every PowerPoint and I got it sitting right there. And I made me, I mean, it was just that good to have that on hand.
I do enjoy them. I really do, and I hate to miss it, but it was the first one I missed. You know, you had to make me feel so bad.
I wasn't trying, it was so good, I had to tell somebody.
And I hated to miss it as well, but I felt like I needed to be here with family, of course. I did, uh, Tina stole my thunder. I did get to, um, be part of the beginning teacher, um, the committee that interviewed, um, for the beginning teacher of the year. And we are blessed, that was a great group. Every one of them, um, could have been a winner and represented as well. I thoroughly enjoyed that. But y'all know beginning teachers are near and dear to my heart. And, um, I got to go to the John B. Coltrane Festival. And, um, enjoyed the time that I was there.
Thank you, Ms. Anybody else?
Chocolate cake was so good, Bobby's too.
We.
Be a cake.
Let me say something about Virgie Clark, Virgie worked in the cafeteria when I was at Elry, Elry Middle School. And Virgie, I think, made cakes for Pam and I for the entire five years I was there for Thanksgiving and Christmas and birth. What a, what a, what a talented, talented lady. And you know something, the thing that was, talking about children, every day you walked into that cafeteria, she had a smile on her face and she did her job with pride and she took those kids and just loved every one of them. And I guess you, what a, what a wonderful. Superintendent Tass report.
I'm sorry, I agree, the law conference was excellent. Thank you all for, um, hanging through that and, um, all the things that we learned. Ronald, I, I would love to have a copy of PowerPoints. I tried to get a copy and I did not do very well with the technology. And I appreciate members of my team not making any comment about that. But that'd be great because one of the things that I've talked with Eva about already is the possibility of going a little more in depth because as you all know, they kept saying, but consult with your local board attorney. Consult, consult with your local board attorney. Um, and they made it very clear they were not giving legal advice, they were giving legal information. Um, but it was excellent. And so I've talked with Eva about the possibility of doing, um, a work session at some point, um, to go a little more in depth on some of the topics, particularly the ones that we've sort of dealt with here in the last, um, little while. And so that would be great if you'd be willing to share those with me. Um, and then Jenny put a, um, a sheet at your, um, seat tonight to show you the community centers. You all will remember that as part of my evaluation, one of the things that you all requested was that we go out into the community, to some different community centers and not just like, um, you know, we did the NAACP and some others. But you all requested specific ones in, um, certain communities. And so it looks like about five of those are scheduled. Um, we have two left scheduled, Jenny has been working on those. And I just wanted you all to have those dates and times and locations. Of course, you are welcome to be there. Um, I will be there with members of my team. And we primarily question and answer, um, but that's how it was pretty much when we did some of the, when we did the others. And, um, that seemed to work out really well and people seemed to be, uh, very appreciative of that. In your weekly update this week, you'll have a little more information on the next three things I'm going to say. But I wanted to just share for the purpose of, um, of the board meeting that State Superintendent Mo Green had to reschedule because of a storm that was, um, supposedly coming this way that did not. But, um, he will be here on October twenty-seventh, starting at eight AM at, um, Richmond Senior High School in the, um, lobby of the new gym, auxiliary gym. And we will spend a few hours with him, um, kind of sharing some things about CTE and so forth. Um, and ultimately ending up at Richmond Community College with, um, Amazon sharing some things about workforce development with him at lunch. But again, there's more information for you, um, in your weekly update coming on Friday. Um, Amazon is doing, um, a, a big day on October thirtieth. Um, and we're going to, um, have some students involved in that. And, um, it, some of us have the opportunity, we'll call it, to go be videoed tomorrow to be part of a promotional video. And so, um, more information to come on that in the weekly update. But that's going to be a great opportunity to kind of showcase that partnership, which will be a really, um.
Is that same event we got an invitation to in the, in an email?
If you have not received it yet, you will receive an invitation. Um, it might have come from the chamber or it might have come from, um, an individual person, but you, you will get the opportunity to, um, to do that. And then the last thing that I'll mention to you that, um, will also be in your update this coming Friday is I will be giving the, uh, an update on Richmond County Schools to the county commissioners at their November fourth, um, commissioners meeting that starts at five thirty PM at the courthouse. And, um, you know, if you can be there, you're welcome. If you cannot be there, I'll put, um, I'll give you all a copy of the, um, PowerPoint presentation or whatever presentation I decide, um, to, to do. But that will be on November fourth. And yes, that is election day, but, um, they are still having the meeting. So they do continue to have their meetings on election day if it's not a presidential election year or so. Um, and that's all that I have.
Dr. Farrell? So I need a motion to enter the closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three three one eight eleven A, one and six to present the disclosure of confidential personnel records and discuss the closed matter. That's motion by Mr. Etheridge, second by Ms. Hornsby. All in favor by saying aye. All opposed? We are now entering into closed session.
So I see you, there's two in here.
Chairman Satafield, Dada Baron, members of the board, on board docs is a personnel report in addendum. I'm asking for approval at this time.
Make the motion.
A motion by Mr. Etheridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chilman, any discussion? All favor of their personnel report for October 14th, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now anything else for the good of the cause? Not, I need the motion.
So move.
I have motion by Mr. Baldwin to adjourn. Second, he beats it. He beats it second, all favor.
I say aye. All opposed? Thank you all.